Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the October 18th, 2023 meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We'll call the meeting to order, and we do have a quorum present today. We did not have anyone register for public comments. So, we first need to vote on our consent agenda. Everyone's had a chance to review that ahead of time. Did anybody have any items they would like removed for further discussion?
If there are none, I'll move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Jacob? Ms. Sablewater?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Okay, then we have old business. We have one item there today, and it is the Racket Club subdivision, Lot 1, commercial center site plan for two multi-tenant commercial buildings totaling 12,840 square feet on 8.03 acres. Zone Commercial Highway located at 605 River Rock Boulevard. Eric Dill is the developer. Ms. Rush, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Chair Jones, Commission. It's good to see you all again. So, this item was before the Planning Commission on September 20th. I apologize for not being here that date, but Mr. Blomley did a very good job in presenting this project. So, this is the location of the old Racket Club facility located along the east side of River Rock Boulevard. The owner, the applicant, Mr. Eric Dill, is proposing to develop this property with additional buildings for Phase 1, which is before you today, is for two buildings, commercial multi-tenant, one located along the west side of this existing building, and the other one will be located at the north end of the property, north of this building, adjacent to the condominiums that are to the north. So, the applicant's also proposing to keep and retain the use of the existing building. He currently occupies that with his business, so there's office, warehousing, storage. There's also the continual use of the building for athletic, which is what it was before, was indoor racket, racquetball courts, and currently is used for batting cages, throwing practice, football throwing practice, so a variety of athletic types of uses inside there. Because of the residential uses to the north, the applicant's site plan includes a buffer D along the north property line, which includes the berm, a three-foot-tall berm and a fence on top of it. The reason why this is coming back for you today is that there were some outstanding comments that were significant, and we had asked for the applicant to address those. The first of those was the parking analysis. So, there was no, not enough sufficient information that was provided for the use of the existing building. So, the applicant had provided for this semittel, a floor plan, a calculation of those areas, and then updated the parking calculations. So, those were part of the attachments to the staff report. With that analysis that was provided, it is more than adequate. The parking exceeds the minimum parking standards per the zoning ordinance, so staff is comfortable with the parking that's shown and provided on the site plan. The second issue that was outstanding was the management of storm water, specifically to the detention pond. If Mr. Blomley can pull that up?
It's, it's open on the, there's, it's open, one of which is the, the one-page.
Got it. All right. So, last evening around 4:30, we received an updated drainage plan. It was reviewed by our engineer, and the comments that were outstanding have been addressed. And so, staff would be recommending with this application today that the engineering comments be removed because they have all been addressed, so she would have no comments at this time. So, as you can see, in this area, along the eastern portion of the property, the detention pond was shifted to the north, one foot of freeboard was added, and the details that she was looking for was provided. The next issue that was outstanding was the architecture. Specifically, we were looking for more articulation, more void space, and the architecture has been revised to address those. I don't know if I can scroll through this quick enough, but, so there is now a significant amount more void space. They've added columns that provide some reveals and variation to the wall plane. The building materials remain the same as was proposed last month, which is all masonry brick, steel roof. This doesn't show up really good, but, so you can see there's a lot more windows, doors. There's a base, which is in an alternative stone material or brick color, and then metal roofing. So, staff is comfortable with the building revisions to the architecture. And then the last item that was outstanding was the design of the formal open space needed more details. So, they've provided some additional details with this revised plan, some new benches that look more permanent, they're, they're stone, and then there's more planting materials that are incorporated into the formal open space. We are looking for more details in some of those aspects to be provided, but we can manage that through the prior to permit comments. So, with the revisions presented and comments included in the staff report, staff is recommending approval of this site plan with the modification to the planning engineer comments being removed, and with the notation that no comments for that section. The applicant's representative, Mr. Bill Huddleston, is here, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Mr. Blomley as well, in terms of the process. This has been a very long process and a lot of back and forth, but we do feel comfortable that we can move forward with an approval at this time. Thank you.
I do want to compliment Ms. Rush and Ms. Knopf. They have put in many hours over the last number of months working on getting this plan compliant and in good order for you, and so it is, they have, they have put in a really, really good effort on this, and we appreciate them.
Most definitely. Thank you all. What other comments or questions? Anybody have any other concerns? It sounds like they've addressed everything.
There are no other questions or comments. I'll make a motion that we approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Oh, no. Excuse me. Ms. Jacob?
Ms. Sablewater? Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you again for all y'all's hard work on that. Next, we're moving on to the GDO. The first item there is Clary Park, Lot 7, PF Chang's. Final design and site plan review of a 6,611-square-foot restaurant located on 1.7 acres, zoned CH and GDO 1, located along Medical Center Parkway, Honey Locust Lane, and Robbie Corleau Lane, PF. Murfreesboro Medical LLC is the developer. Ms. Green, good afternoon.
Thank you, Ms. Jones and Planning Commission members. Good afternoon. Our first item under the gateway portion of our agenda today is for you to consider final design review and site plan approval for the Lot 7 within the Clary Park development. And on the screen, I have an ortho photo where you can see the site called out here. The site will have frontage along three of its sides, or three of its lot lines, one along Medical Center Parkway, which is the major arterial, and the street with the highest functioning classification, another on Honey Locust, and then the third on the new street, Robbie Corleau. And you can see that Honey Locust is an extension. This project is for a restaurant called PF Chang's, which is primarily a sit-down restaurant, and it came to you last month for initial design review. And during our discussions last month, we looked at a master plan of the Clary Park development, and I was sure to include that in your staff report today as well, so that you can see the various plans that have been approved. And so, if you'd like me to refer to that at any point, I'd be glad to, but you can see on the plan that there's some townhomes, multifamily, and then commercial out parcels that are a part of this development. I shared with you that this is a property that has three fronts, and so that provides a unique design opportunity. In addition to the gateway having a requirement to have four-sided architecture, so even though there is a utility area, there's no true back-of-house as far as design and architecture, it has the added layer of ensuring that it's designed with the three fronts. The architect was here last month to present the project to you, and the material board I can pass around if you'd like, or I have it available on a table before you to see. And the Planning Commission seemed to receive the project well and offered limited feedback regarding the design of the site. We did notice during the meeting that the architect's plan and civil plans didn't, didn't, had some conflicting information, two horses versus one horse, and some other information. But the site, the civil team has been able to update their plans to reflect the intent shared by the architect, and so now the plans that you have, they both are saying the same thing, and they've been able to correct that. And they are designing the plan with formal open space. One of the elements unique to this project in addition to the horse is that the elevation along Robbie Corleau will have, and they talked about having an artist come do a design on that building. I'm intentionally dancing around the word mural, because although a layperson may call it a mural, the word mural is defined in our sign ordinance, and it would not meet the definition of mural. Essentially, it has only the elevation on Medical Center Parkway, if it was on that, it would be called a mural, which wouldn't be allowed. So, it's an architectural feature, and rather than needing to comply with the sign ordinance, it needs to comply with the architectural review that the Planning Commission does. So, if you're okay with it, it'll move forward. The only other example I can think of is across the street, there's something called Brewery.
BJ's.
BJ's Brew House, yes. Where it's not actually a brew house, it's a restaurant, but they have the images on the sides of the building of people thrashing wheat and collecting the harvest. And so, that's the other example where something like that's been commissioned. However, in this case, an artist will design the piece rather than being fabricated in a sign shop. And then the area that was previously not an outdoor dining area has been updated to be an outdoor dining area. The site is in relatively good order. They've incorporated the bike racks, because there is a linear park that runs throughout this development, and we want to make sure to create that continuity and connection with the existing development and the future residents here, so that it would be simple for them to use the linear park and visit these establishments in addition to the high numbers of drive-by traffic on Medical Center Parkway. See if there's any pages. They wanted to ensure you had an idea of what the project would look like, so there's several sheets in here. You see that snake tail or dragon tail, whatever it is, that's just an idea or just a placeholder for the art that will be there, the image that's not a mural. But they wanted to kind of give you scale, proportion, so you can really have the opportunity to see the building and see the design.
And Ms. Green, can I just ask, so will we see that design before it goes up, or do we have any idea what it'll be, or just something along those lines?
I don't have any idea what it would be, and you could ask to see it before it goes up, I think.
Well.
The applicants are okay with that. They just haven't commissioned the artist yet, and they wanted to give the artist an opportunity to, to use their creative process to come up with something.
It won't go through sign, you're saying? It's not a sign?
Right.
And, I mean, I don't know, I would just think even if staff, I mean, I don't necessarily have to see it, I think if it's a piece of art, I think it will be fine. I just, you know, there's a lot of definitions of art, and my version might not be the same as somebody else's, so, no. But, I mean, I certainly don't think it has to, like, come back through the whole process, at least as far as I would be concerned, but I imagine.
We could ask them to submit it to staff.
But I hope they do at least submit it to staff to review.
Okay.
If that works.
If it was a sign, we would be very limited in what we could say about the image, because there's some First Amendment's protection if it's actually a sign, but it's not a sign, it's architectural features, and so actually the Planning Commission can say something about it. It gets a little, like, I think you're noticing a camel's nose could get under that tent, and it could be, I don't think it's anybody's intent, but we can add that as a condition, and if it's, and if it's necessary, we could raise it to the Planning Commission's attention, but otherwise, approve it administratively, if that's, if that's what you want. I think it would be a part of your motion if, if you approve this project. And then Mr. Matt Taylor is here with SEC. He's representing the civil. Do you have, do you want to present the project? I think he's got jet lag, and so, but if you have any questions, obviously, we'd be, our pleasure to answer them.
So, on the architectural, I love how you phrase it. Can you give me that one more time?
Architecture, I called it a feature, but it could be element.
Architectural feature. Will that be, I mean, I guess we just don't know, but, I mean, could it be, like, three-dimensional, even, like, something that protrudes off the building, so to speak, is my, is kind of where I want to know what's going to go there? Or is it going to be a flat piece?
Yeah. So, we did ask to look at the materials behind where that's going, because some of my concern is even if it is approved, let me zoom in, is what's behind it, if they want to take it down. You know, we, in the gateway, the way we manage new projects is that building should have, the brick should have its own inherent color, not be painted, so if you want a light color, then choose a light-colored brick. And so, sometimes, so when you put images up, it's better to put the image on, on a, it's not a canvas, but on a surface, and then apply it to the building, so that you don't have, if PF Chang's isn't here in the future and it comes to something else. So, they're actually, it's brick behind, they won't be painting directly on the brick, they'll be painting on a, a surface and applying it in front of the brick, so that it could come down in the future, and you could still maintain the integrity of the brick behind it.
Okay.
And so, this is me zooming in. A herringbone pattern is what's proposed there. So, it's not ephesus. Ephesus is essentially styrofoam, and, you know, you can just scratch it off if you want, and so, would not be very durable behind those, those sorts of elements. They have designed it with brick here.
Okay. That answers my question. Thank you.
It would not be a 3D thing that comes out. If they wanted to do that, I would bring it back.
Well, I was thinking, like, on that dragon's tail, for instance, like, the dragon's tail being three-dimensional up against maybe the brick and it being backlit or something to that effect.
This looks like it's lit. That is artistic liberty. Outline lighting is prohibited in the gateway, so even if they wanted to have outline lighting, they couldn't do it. You can have architectural lighting, so you can light eaves and parts of the building, and actually, it's part of the standard to add nighttime interest to Murfreesboro. We want you to really enhance the features of the building and have lighting. However, outline or strip lighting that you might see running around the top of the building or around that rectangle is defined as a sign and is prohibited in the gateway. So, there are some liberties here, is kind of what I'm saying. They're just, I think, having fun.
I was thinking kind of along the lines of when Harley-Davidson came. I personally loved the sign, that wasn't a sign that they put on the side of their building. Caused a lot of controversy in the end, and, but, that's where, you know, I want it to be something architectural, artistic, you know, that we'll all love.
And we like to be able to share with other people who see something and say, well, I want to do the exact same thing. We want to make sure that you understand the differences in the buildings. The way the sign ordinance is written with murals is it's defined as a mural, it can't be on the primary front. So, this has three fronts. Primary front is Med Center, so you could not do this on Med Center. And so, I think it's important when other people see it, and they might want to copy it, to understand the differences. And we are sure to bring it up at Planning Commission and not just have it be a staff-level interpretation.
Any other comments or questions or concerns regarding this final design and site plan review?
So, I apologize, I was not here when this came through the first time, because the horse was a big shocker to me. Can you, can you talk me through the horse?
I think Mr. Taylor probably can.
I'm sure he'd love to.
Matt Taylor of SEC. I don't have my four-year-old up there every time we go. It's just part of what PF Chang's does at their new restaurants. I think the one in Cool Springs has something similar. I don't know if it's the exact same design. You might remember the Los Trojas Mexican restaurant that we approved, or is under construction, I guess, down in front of Embassy Suites. I think it had a similar, except for it maybe had a carriage behind it, if I remember right, so it's just kind of a marquee. I won't call it signage, because I don't want to get in trouble, but just an identifier of their brand.
But the horse is going to be on Medical Center?
Yes, it would be. If you look at sheet 2.0, it's going to be to the right of the main entry point.
How many feet off Medical Center will this horse be?
Approximately 40, 60, 80 to 90 feet.
And it has color on, did you guys, I guess you guys already talked about the horse, and everyone was okay with the horse?
There were two, there were two horses.
So, we took off a horse, so we already cut it 50%.
They're one horse short.
So, the one in Cool Springs is all white. This one has, seems to have color on it.
It looks like the saddle, and it's a little more ornate on the riding gear, I guess you could, would call that. So, it's not going to impose on Medical Center. I don't know the exact height of that, but, you know, between the trees and the shrubs and the distance, it is not going to be an imposing feature on Medical Center at all.
I mean, it's taller than the car parked next to it in the photo.
I would say that, but it's not, like, it would be different, I think, if we're proposing it out there. I think it'd be more imposing. Back here, internal to the side, it's going to be a much, it's much more internal to the side. It's some of the lawn art or yard art, whatever you want to call it, that we look for sometimes in our formal open spaces, I think. You could probably go as far to call it some artwork or home sculpture-type facility there.
Do you want to add the second one back in?
Definitely not. So, every, so the conversation at the last Planning Commission meeting was just take away a horse, but we're fine with one horse? What was the conversation?
We wanted two. They took away one.
They, they took one away. The other one ran.
You wanted two?
No, it ran away.
Will you stop, Brian? What were you saying?
It was already out.
Yeah, it was gone.
Before we saw it.
Yeah, we, it originally started with two, and then the architect had taken one off, and that was one of the features Margaret Ann was talking about, that the site plan and the architectural didn't jive, and so, we'd already done that on our accord.
Opposition to the horse isn't a minority.
I guess, that's okay, if it is. That is okay if it is.
You're supposed to ask how many hands is the horse?
I, yeah. That's ugly. I'm sorry. But, I mean, there's no, Margaret Ann, there's no ordinance against the horse, I guess. Things I never thought I'd say as a council member. You can put a horse on Medical Center Parkway?
Horse is a horse, of course, of course. No one can talk to a horse, of course, unless the horse is famous, Mr. Ed. You're going to be older.
I'm so glad that was recorded. Thank you for that.
So, it, there's nothing against it. Art is encouraged. I don't necessarily know that this would fall into category of art or not. It is fabricated by fiberglass. I did ask about the materials.
Because, yeah, and that was my other question.
Los Trojas has a horse, so I did not say coming in, you can't have a horse, but you guys need to talk about the horse. This horse is gold. The one in Cool Springs is white. The one in Oxford is opposing, so if you've seen that one, this won't be the same size. But it is a gold horse, so it does have color, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, so when I look at the Google Image photos of the PF Chang's in Cool Springs, it looks like the horse is very discolored and faded, and we've been very particular on Medical Center Parkway about the type of materials that are used on buildings, because we don't want fading and water stains, and we have given people the runaround on windows. And in five years, what is this horse going to look like? What kind of assurances can we have that it's going to be upkept? Because the Google Image of the one in Cool Springs is, I mean, it's awful.
That's a good question. We can ask Mr. Taylor if he can give us any assurances for maintenance. The, there's nothing in zoning that I could have told them they can't come to you with a horse, but you can say no horse if that's the decision of the Planning Commission.
Or maybe in general, because I really like this horse, but in general.
You can put it in your house over there on the north side.
I like the horse, too.
Where do you think the other horse went? In general, like, how do we, if we're using architectural, you know, reasons for signs and we're using art for signs, then who's responsible for overseeing that, right? Because it won't be the sign department, and we would pass it, and then there would be no further review by us, so like, what is staff plan? And I know there's other elements of architecture that aren't necessarily finalized at this point.
Sure, and the Planning Commission, many years ago, was, I don't know what, what the word is, but were deemed the Architectural Review Committee for the city. Sometimes you have a separate board for that, but actually, the Planning Commission has that same function as well, so I think there's a little bit more that you all can, can do. The, I think the one in Cool Springs is supposed to look like faux marble, and this one is to look like faux gold. And so, did you want to talk about?
No, I think. I mean, what I'd say is I think it's going to be managed in the same way that the maintenance of the building would be managed, and so, you know, you can get some discoloration on any material that you put on the building, just like you could this feature. And so, I think it's up to, you know, I'm sure there's some maintenance guidelines or criteria in the city's ordinance. I couldn't speak to that, but, you know, you can get some, I don't know what they're called, I'm sure an architect could tell me, but the white, the white spill that you see on brick at times, maybe effervescence or something like that, you know, it's the same sort of thing. And so, there's some natural patina. I might even go as far as to call it a patina instead of a, an aging type item. I pulled up the, the images I could see in Cool Springs, maybe you've got a bad one, council lady. It still looked okay. Like Ms. Green said, it's supposed to look like a faux marble in, at that particular location, is what it looks like to me. But I don't think this would be, the maintenance on this would be any different than the maintenance of the building itself.
Okay. Well, I am just one vote. You all have considered this. I apologize for my tardiness, so, that's just my. Welcome back from vacation, Mr. Taylor. Did you miss me?
I missed the whole Planning Commission.
I'm pro-horse, so if there's not any more questions, I'll move for approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
We have a motion and, oops, and, yes, Ms.
Sorry. Was there anything you wanted to say about the art or the architectural feature on the front-facing Robbie Corleau mural?
Yes, I would like to see that back for Planning Commission approval as part of my motion.
Mr. Prince, is that?
Well, I would like to second that motion now as well.
All right. Thank you. So, would you have a motion and a second? Ms. Jacob?
No.
Ms. Sablewater?
No.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passed. Thank you very much. Our next item is also Clary Park. This is Lot 10, Raising Cane's. Final design and site plan review of 2,899-square-foot carryout restaurant located on 1.4 acres, zoned CH and GDO 1, located along Medical Center Parkway and Robbie Corleau Lane. Raising Cane's Restaurants LLC is the developer. Ms. Green?
Thank you very much. This next item under the gateway portion of our agenda this afternoon is for you to review plans for Lot 10 within the Clary Park development, which is the community that consists of multifamily, single-family attached, and commercial out parcels along Medical Center Parkway. And this is for a fast-food restaurant, or carryout restaurant is how we define it in our zoning ordinance, called Raising Cane's. Raising Cane's does the majority of their business through drive-through, but also have a capability to seat inside and outside. This property, of course, is zoned Commercial Highway District and located in the Gateway Design Overlay, and the use is permitted. I included the master plan sheet in the plans as well, and so you can see the Raising Cane's is actually this lot. And then you just recently reviewed plans for PF Chang's, which is here, so they kind of orient you a little bit. This lot has access onto Medical Center Parkway and two access drives onto Robbie Corleau This lot has access onto Medical Center Parkway and two access drives onto Robbie Corleau Lane. And this is actually at the end of Robbie Corleau where it deadends into a cul-de-sac for the public right-of-way. Adjacent to this property is the Redstone Credit Union, which I think that you're all familiar with. The project, or the property was able to meet its minimum parking standards and queuing and stacking standards while also designing the site with the required bypass lane. It does also have formal open space in the area that's located between the building and Robbie Corleau Lane. Similar to the other project, there are two front lot lines, one along Robbie Corleau, one along Medical Center Parkway. However, the lot lines on the side are actually side property lines. The gateway, of course, requires four-sided architecture and the building was able to be designed with that in mind. It's an entirely brick building with glass as the void spaces, and you can see that on the design. They also have a covered order pickup area that's shown on the plans that I have before you. In this instance, they're showing potential signage, but it hasn't applied, they haven't applied for their sign permit. So what's being shown may not be an accurate representation of what is permitted in the sign ordinance. The area of formal open space is that area between the back of the building but Robbie Corleau Lane where the queuing spaces are, and you can see on the screen here. The landscape architect was able to creatively use the space that sometimes is underutilized and to use some of the elements that are in the overall Clary Park development. So the same landscape forum bench, the rail pavers, the same bike racks and receptacle that's used in the linear park. And in the other, out parcels are also proposed on this lot. The community should be tied together, and it's a little bit more difficult for out parcels on Medical Center Parkway. However, they're able to do that by integrating those same design features into each lot and having that continuity and repetition. The site hasn't proposed to put in any electric vehicle charging stations in, but they do have some to-go or pickup spots identified on the plan. Those parking spaces are not included in the minimum parking calculations, so they do exceed their minimum parking calculations. A civil team is here to answer any questions you may have. I'll go ahead and invite them up to kind of walk through the project, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you have.
Hi, I'm Emma Donnelly-Bullington with Kim Lee Horn and Associates. I think Margaret Ann did a great job introducing the project, so I'll just be available for any questions. As she mentioned, we are overparked. We've got quite a bit of parking on the site. And I think our formal open space is, I think, pretty well designed. I think it looks very nice next to the building right there, but happy to answer any questions you might have.
I am A-OK. I'm just wondering where a giant chicken is. Is there going to be a chicken?
No giant chicken, no horse, nothing on our side.
Can we add a giant chicken?
We could certainly discuss it.
Access looks fine, and the queuing lane looks fine. Landscaping looks fine. From where I sit?
The only thing I, just in looking at those initially, was just the covered space. I guess that's where you place your order. Reminded me of the old flat top gas station canopies that we prohibit. So, but I.
Which one, Ms. Jones? I think there's specifically the one where they order or the one where they pick up the food?
What looks to be the big one where the, at the back on Robbie Corleau, where they place the order. There.
Over your elevation.
That looks like a gas station cover to me.
Well, I mean, that will be on Robbie Corleau, but now that she's pointed that out, those other two canopy looking things, those will be visitable from Medical Center, right?
There's a canopy just in front of the building. Let me go back to the site plan here. So there's a canopy in the front that covers a, an outdoor seating area. So it'll have potentially some lighting that is allowed. I know there's some complications with lighting in the signage ordinance, but there'll be lighting there and high-quality outdoor furniture. And then the one over on the left side of the page there would be visible from Medical Center, potentially through the landscaping. But again, it'll be high-quality architectural finishes. But it would be visible from Medical Center, the pickup canopy.
Hey, Margaret Ann, have you, have you seen the material for that yet? Is it similar? I guess I'm picturing Burger Republic, Bad Daddy's. Is it that kind of material?
It, the.
That covers the outdoor area?
It'd be so heavy. This metal on this board actually is the metal on the awning. When we looked at awnings, the design guidelines are specific to say gas canopies should be pitched or other architectural treatments, so they're not flat. And so this is a canopy associated with the structure that's not a gas canopy. There are other fast food restaurants in Clary Park with similar designs, and there are medical facilities that are somewhat similar. And so the gateway does say that it has to be in architectural harmony, same high-quality materials in the design, to be like an integrated design with the building and the canopy. But the minimum standard for having that pitched canopy is specific to gas canopies.
Okay. And I'm just.
And here is.
Just that one quick look at it right there especially was, just want to make sure it's all.
So it's, it's metal. It's the same metal that's on the trim. And when she was mentioning lighting, this is showing string lighting. String lighting is defined in the zoning ordinance as a type of sign. And it is generally not allowed except for Christmas time, for like a month. And so you can't use cafe lights or string lights as lighting. You really need to have flush mounted recess fixtures like we see in the ceiling here. And so they like to use those, and they just haven't been able to update the rendering yet, but know that it's defined in the sign ordinance. And so it wouldn't be allowed. There are some places that have PSOs where you have them, the fountains and the avenues, and you know, they add a nice ambiance. But I think the ordinance is a catch-all to get some businesses that string them across their inventory storage to draw attention. And that's really what I was trying to prohibit, or people who you leave holiday lights up all year. But it kind of catches all lights like that because the way it's written. So they will have compliant lighting when they get their permits.
I'm okay. If there's nothing else, I'll move for approval subject to all staff comments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Jacob?
Ms. Sabrewater?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
If it's helpful to the finishes on the metal, generally speaking, we require Kinar, like in the avenues, we require a Kinar finish, which is a baked-on coating at the manufacturer. It's not painted on, so it holds up over time better than other, like paint-applied finishes or the type finishes. So in here, they specify Kinar finish. We've accepted other types, but the metal storefronts, any metal that's used is actually a baked-on finish. It's not, it's not aftermarket applied. And so it should weather better.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
All right.
Madam Chair, may I make an introduction of someone in our audience?
You may.
I'd like to introduce Ken Roka, who is Murfreesboro City Schools' new Assistant Superintendent of Student Support Services and formerly Principal of Bradley, I believe. Correct, Ken?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ken is here with Leadership Rutherford, and I just wanted to introduce him. He is part of the new leadership team over at Murfreesboro City Schools.
Great. Congratulations. And thanks for being here today. Okay. We are moving on to plats and plans. Item A has been withdrawn, so we will move on to item B, the Arbers at Compton, Sections 2 and 3 preliminary plat for 88 lots on 28.5 acres, zoned PRD, located along Compton Road and Emery Court. Lennar Homes of Tennessee LLC is the developer. Ms. Aguilera, welcome. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Chair Jones. I'm going to this document and getting my materials. I'll let Mr. Blomley introduce me like he did the gentleman in the audience.
This is Joel Aguilera.
As you said, the second item on our agenda is the Arbers at Compton, Section 2 and Section 3 preliminary plat. This is a continuation of the Arbers at Compton subdivision. You last, planning commission last saw this item back in 2022, submitted in April 2022, reviewed and approved by planning commission, the, for the master plan in Section 1 preliminary plat in May of 2022. So this is a continuation of this subdivision. You can see here on the, on the sheet that I've provided, Section 1 was right here, 2 is right here, and 3 is right here. So this is a preliminary plat review for Section 2 and 3. The purpose for this preliminary plat is the creation of 88 lots of record, the dedication for common area, right-of-way and easements. Under usual circumstances, Section 2 and Section 3 of preliminary plat wouldn't necessarily come to the planning commission. It would be on our consent agenda. However, there were some opportunities that staff wanted to address with this preliminary plat. The overall functionality of the preliminary, of Section 2 and Section 3 is sufficient and consistent with the program book, the Arbers at Compton PRD book. But staff wanted to bring this to the planning commission for their review and consideration to just talk about some opportunities with the grading, the grading plan and the overall functionality of the residential lots. Again, the overall functionality of Section 2 and Section 3 are still consistent with the preliminary plat, with the program book. Staff just wanted to address these opportunities, these items with the residential lots and the functionality of the grading plan. SEC has readily been available to address some of the items that staff has brought up. One of the attachments are, in front of you today, is a correspondence from SEC on some of their potential solutions on how they intend to address the grading plan. And again, the functionality of those residential lots that they are, that we have continuously worked on with them. The review of the plans from SEC have shown a lot of significant improvements with it. They have, again, been readily available from, with staff to work with us. And the project engineer has been available to review these plans. So staff is in a much more comfortable position, a much more comfortable position with the current plans proposed. We just also received some plans today as well this morning, to which the project engineer will, as it states in the email, will review these further. But again, staff believes that we are in a much more comfortable position to review these. Again, with these plans being consistent with the program book, staff believes that these have met the minimum development standards of the program book, the Arbers at Compton PRD book, and the engineering standards as well. And so again, with these opportunities that we just wanted to bring forward, we asked that, should you approve this preliminary plat for Section 2 and 3, that we, that you approve these subject to all staff comments? Katie Knoll is here. She is the project engineer for this. If you have any engineering questions, she can answer that. I can answer any questions regarding the, the residential lots, the setback standards, et cetera. And Matt Taylor is here as well with SEC.
And, and just to reiterate, that these, the lots that were before you in the agenda packet were compliant with our minimum standards. It was just a matter of continuing to work with Mr. Taylor and his team to make sure that, from a livability standpoint for the future residents, that, that there were some things I think we could do to improve that. And so it was just us working with Mr. Taylor to, to provide some improvements to some slopes to make sure that, that, you know, people, you know, right at their back door didn't have a steep slope, you know, going into their backyard. And, and Mr. Taylor has, has proposed a solution. Our engineering staff is good with that solution. I would ask Mr. Taylor to come to the podium and just confirm that he's okay. The email that Mr. Aguilera referenced that's been placed in front of you, that, that Mr. Taylor is good, putting, making those commitments a part of the, the record today and, and a part of the approval of the plan.
Absolutely. The Honorable, I'll make a motion that we make, that we approve subject to all staff comments.
Second. Motion and a second. Ms. Jacob?
Ms. Sabrewater?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. Next, we are moving on to new business. We have five, five items there today. Our first one is mandatory referral and right-of-way abandonment. To consider the abandonment of a right-of-way on property at 1935 Northwest Broad Street. Huddleston Steel Engineering on behalf of 84 Lumber Company is the applicant. Ms. Kerr, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Chair Jones, members of planning commission. The subject right-of-way for this mandatory referral is located on 84 Lumber property west of Northwest Broad Street and east of the CSX Railway on a parcel address is 1935 Northwest Broad Street. It was recorded in 1949 on the Thomas Henry White Farm subdivision plat. And the area surrounding the subject right-of-way is zoned heavy industrial. 84 Lumber has plans to extend its facilities to the property to the north of their current property. One of the conditions of the approval of the site plan was to record a resubdivision plat to combine all of the properties for 84 Lumber onto one lot. Because this right-of-way appears to be in excess and no longer needed for its original intended public purposes, 84 Properties LLC has requested that it be abandoned. Staff urged the property owner to move forward with the right-of-way abandonment requested as the, requested as the public function of the right-of-way, of this segment of it appears to be minimal. It is currently beneath one of their outdoor storage facilities that they have on the property. If abandoned, the subject right-of-way will be quit claimed to the adjacent property owner, and the plat will be updated before it is recorded to show this right-of-way as having been abandoned. Planning commission will need to discuss this right-of-way abandonment request and schedule it for a public hearing. Staff is working on preparing right-of-way abandonment study to have at the public hearing for planning commission to review prior to that public hearing. Staff recommends date of November 1st for the public hearing.
Okay. Any questions or concerns before we set a public hearing? Now we're ready for a motion.
Motion to set a public hearing for November 1st.
Second.
Motion and a second. Ms. Jacob?
Ms. Sabrewater?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we have a zoning application for approximately 0.35 acres located along Van Cleve Lane to be rezoned from RS 15 to light industrial. Norman Brown is the applicant. Ms. Green?
Thank you very much. This next application is, or this next item is for you to consider a zoning application submitted to our department requesting that a public hearing be scheduled so the planning commission may consider a zoning map amendment for a portion of property. That property is shown in blue on the map that's before you. You can see this map is a current zoning map, and Thompson Lane is on the east side of the property. The property owner is, Mr. Brown, is the same property owner for the adjacent Roscoe Brown's property, which is the one that I just put an asterisk on. I'll go to the next page with the ortho that might help you. Mr. Brown would like to make some modifications to the existing business in the back. And so they would like to rezone the property that's currently zoned for single-family purposes, RS 15, to light industrial district. The Roscoe Brown property was built and developed prior to the gateway design overlay district. The GDO was added along this section of North Thompson Lane in 2003, 2004, after that property was developed. So the Roscoe Brown property is owned light industrial district and gateway design overlay district. However, the application for you today is to zone this 0.35 acre portion of property to just light industrial district and not within the gateway design overlay district. As far as current zoning, the properties to the, to the east are zoned light industrial. And then Polaris Hospital or Trust Point is to the north. And you may recall that they did a rezoning to commercial medical to the. They were zoned RS 15 when the city initiated annexation and did annex the properties back in, I think, 2005 or 2006. With those are lots that were developed in a county and annexed by the city later. The National Battlefield is just to the north off of this page. The light industrial district is intended to provide areas which the principal uses are permitted are warehousing, wholesaling, and light assembly. The idea is that heavy industrial uses such as steel mills and manufacturing facilities would not be permitted. The applicant has indicated that they'd like to do some outdoor storage or contractor storage yard for the area, and that would not be permitted in the gateway, hence they're not asking for the extension of the gateway over line, overlay district as well. The property was, the existing Rusko Brown's property was platted in 2002, and I've got that plat available for you. You can see that there was a buffer identified on this plat. Later, in 2003, additional property was added to the Rusko Brown property, which is Lot 2, and shifted that buffer, the type E buffer, to the east. So with the, any future subdivisions, the required buffer would shift to the east as well. The type of buffer that's required between light industrial and the surrounding RS 15 would be a type E buffer, which is 20 feet wide. I included in your packet, and will of course include it in your, in your city count, or in your public hearing packet, a, the chart 1, which is just pages from our zoning ordinance that give the uses that are permitted. And I highlighted the uses that are permitted in the light industrial district so that you can look at them if you'd like. Those uses that are identified with an X are permitted by right. And if they have an S, that means special use permit is required, and that would go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. So that information's available for you before you make your decision after the public hearing. This project is, or this property is identified on our future land use map as suburban residential, which is a single fam, sorry, single-family category, and it has single-family lots of 10, 12, or 15,000 square feet or larger for the area. The proposed zoning is not consistent with the future land use map. However, the revised chapter that goes with the future land use map says that the Planning Commission may consider areas as transitional areas and lists a bullet point, or some bullet points for the Planning Commission to consider. And it talks about maybe it's on the boundary or for some other reasons. Our updated future land use map also says reasons to allow for transition flexibility between land uses or changes to the future land use map are not limited to these examples. Each proposed transition or change should be evaluated based on site-specific surrounding context and the current goals of the city leadership. And the property owner did meet with Development Services Director, Mr. McKnight, to discuss this rezoning, and they decided that they should come to you to request you to study this property for light industrial district. Today, we're asking for you to schedule a public hearing for the next available meeting. We do have representative of the applicant in the audience if you have any questions. And of course, I'll be glad to answer your questions.
Okay. Any questions regarding this request?
If there are none, I'll schedule a public hearing. Make a motion to approve?
For November 1st.
For November 1st.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Jekka?
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Green. All right. Next, we have a zoning application for approximately 0.15 acres located along East Castle Street to be rezoned from RD and CCO to PRD and CCO, or East Castle Manor PRD. BA Homes LLC is the applicant. Ms. Smith, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chair Jones and Commission. As you can see on the screen, the location of this particular property was known as 529 East Castle Street. The aerial map shows that there's a building existing, but I have confirmed with the applicant that it has been removed due to some squatting that was occurring on the particular site. But this area is all zoned RD currently across the street. You can see the apartment complex. That's the Housing Authority project that you've already approved to be removed and replaced. And then adjacent to that is the Patterson Complex that is actually zoned RM. As part of the application, they are looking at putting a, one building, duplex building on the lot. Does not currently conform to the city standards in order to have an RD duplex lot on the property. It is also considered mixed form housing here on our future land use map as well as the adjacent properties in the area. And then, as you can see here in the bottom corner, you can see a proposal of what will be seen across the street. Now, the, I wanted to just give you a quick context of the area because of where it is. So this house that you see here on the right-hand side is the one that was recently removed. And what you see on the left-hand side is a very large eight units that are facing Castle Street for the Housing Authority, which they will remove, put a pocket park in the center across the street where you basically see the building, and put in two buildings that look like four plexes on the front, but they're actually eight plexes. But much of the neighborhood, as you can see down the street, is single-family detached, single-story height buildings. Typical materials are predominantly horizontal siding, and none of them along the north side of the street have front-loaded garages. But many people park their cars in their front yards or in their gravel driveways. As you can see here, the Housing Authority, they're basically removing the 46 units that are on 2.78 acres at a density of about 16.55 units to the acre. And for just comparatibility, these are the elevations that they're looking at putting those two buildings that will be on each end of the property that they label Buildings A, as you can see in the bottom left-hand corner. And that's what you would see facing Castle Street. And then the top picture is what you would kind of, in a color rendition, see across the street with that three-dimensional one to the south. And so looking more specifically down this block, the only other similarly situated lots were created a couple years back. The one on the left is a duplex unit on one lot of record, and the one on the right is a, just a single detached one, but that's the closest one down at the end of the block that was created that has brick and siding incorporated into it. And then this is the proposed elevation on the front that would have two garages, single-car garages, and then parking for two additional spaces in front of those garages. This particular project, as I mentioned, has multiple, has seven exceptions that it would be requesting on this, and there's some corrections in the paperwork, but this one shows very clearly where those three parking spaces are. They're asking for a smaller interior garage but would provide bumpouts for the location of the trash outside of where the cars would park. Currently, our CCO has billed two lines, which for this block is about 21 feet, and by right would say only one car can park in the front. So the applicant is asking for all four of these cars to park in the front of the units. This is the one that needs correction. The frontage in the CCO, if the garage is forward of the entryway, should not exceed 50 feet. This is actually at about 62.5 feet. So we would need to update that in the program book. And then I stated that they would have no fence. They do propose fencing between the units. You can see it here in the back. That would just provide separate backyard spaces for these homeowners. And then when you're looking at the comparative, this is looking at the existing lot is 6,500 square feet, and it was compared to the RD district because it is looking at staying on one legal lot of record. If it was looking at splitting the lots, it would be most similar to our RSA 1, which allows about 14.5 units to the acre density. So we're looking at scheduling this for our November 1st public hearing discussion where we'll make some of those updates in the program book. So you'll have that available, but we wanted to give you some of the context today in advance and before setting the public hearing, if there's anything that you want to make sure is included in the program book, now might be a great time to ask for it so we can make sure that's available to you during that time. With that, the applicant, Mr. Burns, is here in the audience as well as his engineer, Matt Taylor.
Okay. Any questions, concerns on this application before we schedule it for a public hearing?
I'll make a motion to schedule the public hearing for November 1st.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, state aye?
Aye.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
Ms. Jekka?
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Thank you, Commission. Thank you. All right. Our next item is an annexation petition and plan of services for approximately 5.2 acres located west of Sanctuary Place. W. Andrew Adams is the applicant. Ms. Rush?
Thank you very much. We'll go to a map. So the property owner, Mr. Adams, has submitted a petition requesting a portion of his property to be annexed into the city of Murfreesboro. The purpose of this request is that the property owners for these three lots are wishing to add approximately 200 linear feet to the backs of their properties, basically just to enlarge the properties that they own currently in the Marymont Springs subdivision. So the application also is accompanied simultaneously with a request to rezone that property if it is to be annexed to Planned Unit District PUD, Marymont Springs, excuse me. So the annexation study area in green is within the city of Murfreesboro's urban growth boundary. It is contiguous to the city limits, which is the gray area. It is within the comprehensive plan, future land use map, identified as suburban residential, so this would be consistent with the future land use map. And it's within the urban service infill line, I'm sorry, the service infill line in the future land use map. So this is an area that we had anticipated for future annexation. The request for now is to ask the Planning Commission to schedule this for a public hearing. Staff is asking for November 1st, 2023. I'm happy to answer any questions related to this property. I'm not sure. I think the applicant is here as well.
Brick, yeah, Bill's here and Brick Murphy representing the applicant is here as well.
Thank you very much.
Any questions regarding this application?
If there are none, I move to set the public hearing for November 1st.
Second.
Motion and a second. Ms. Jekka?
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Okay. And then we also have a zoning application for 5.2 acres located west of Sanctuary Place to be zoned PUD, Marymont Springs PUD, simultaneous with annexation. W. Andrew Adams is the applicant. Ms. Rush?
Thank you. So this is the companion application for the annexation that we just considered. Again, it's for the owners of lots 187, 188, and 190 in the Marymont Springs subdivision. Staff did ask that the owners, or the property owners, to proceed with subdividing the property to carve out this piece that is wishing to be annexed and rezoned, and that that subdivision be completed prior to the public hearing. So they've been in the process of getting that completed and recorded before the public hearing date of November 1st that we're asking for. Adjacent zoning and land uses, so all the properties to the west, north, and south are in the county, and is zoned RM, which is residential medium density. And then the properties to the east, as you can see, are in that subdivision, the PUD for Marymont Springs. Again, the future land use map does identify this as suburban residential, and the proposed zoning is consistent with that land use designation. Staff is asking for November 1st, 2023, to be the public hearing date for this rezoning. Happy to answer any questions if the Commission has any. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions regarding the zoning application?
I'll make a motion that we schedule a public hearing for this matter on November 1st, 2023.
Second.
Motion and a second. Ms. Jekka?
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Rush.
You're welcome.
And that includes our new business. Moving on to staff reports and other business, two items that we know of at this time. First one is consideration of the 2024 Planning Commission calendar. Ms. Blomley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So as always, we bring our 2024 Planning Commission meeting calendar to you. I think I've identified holidays and, and spring break, fall break. I did, I did ask Murfreesboro City Schools if that date, if that week in October has been identified yet, and it has not. So we can always go back and amend the calendar like we've done this year, once, once the city and county schools adopt their, their calendar for the next school year. So, so I'd like two motions from you today, if possible, one to adopt the meeting calendar and one to adopt the plans review calendar, which is the much more detailed calendar that's in your agenda packet. So if anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to, to answer them.
Any questions?
So do you want them in any specific order?
No, just, just two separate motions in, in any order.
Make a motion to approve the meeting calendar.
Motion and a second. Ms. Jekka?
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Okay. And then we also have a zoning application for 5.2 acres located west of Sanctuary Place to be zoned PUD, Marymont Springs PUD, simultaneous with annexation. W. Andrew Adams is the applicant. Ms. Rush?
Thank you. So this is the companion application for the annexation that we just considered. Again, it's for the owners of lots 187, 188, and 190 in the Marymont Springs subdivision. Staff did ask that the owners, or the property owners, to proceed with subdividing the property to carve out this piece that is wishing to be annexed and rezoned, and that that subdivision be completed prior to the public hearing. So they've been in the process of getting that completed and recorded before the public hearing date of November 1st that we're asking for. Adjacent zoning and land uses, so all the properties to the west, north, and south are in the county, and is zoned RM, which is residential medium density. And then the properties to the east, as you can see, are in that subdivision, the PUD for Marymont Springs. Again, the future land use map does identify this as suburban residential, and the proposed zoning is consistent with that land use designation. Staff is asking for November 1st, 2023, to be the public hearing date for this rezoning. Happy to answer any questions if the Commission has any. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions regarding the zoning application?
I'll make a motion that we schedule a public hearing for this matter on November 1st, 2023.
Second.
Motion and a second. Ms. Jekka?
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Okay. Ms. Blomley? We have further business today?
I do. I do have another bit of scheduling business to take care of. If nothing else, just to get the Planning Commission's feedback, we're looking to schedule a
I do have another bit of scheduling business to take care of. If nothing else, just to get the Planning Commission's feedback, we're looking to schedule a special workshop meeting at some point during the month of November to discuss a zoning ordinance amendment that Ms. Smith's been working very hard on. Our, our staff has been getting together over the last several months, having, having kind of a, workshopping it ourself to get it to a place where we can bring it to you for your, for your thoughts. Deals primarily with changes to our, the definition section of our zoning ordinance as well as Chart 1 uses permitted, some, some needed improvements in those, in those areas. So what we'd like to do is to bring it to you for a workshop at some point during the month of November, probably the second half of November, as we are currently working with our, after Ms. Smith finishes her draft, then it'll still have to go through some layers of internal review before it gets to Planning Commission. So wanted to check your availability the second half of the month. If we could get some, just, obviously not Thanksgiving, but if I could just get some general feedback from you on your availability, perhaps the week of the 13th, 20th, or 27th? If any of those weeks doesn't work good for, for any of you, or does work better?
I'm gone 13th.
Sorry?
I'll be gone on the 13th.
Okay.
To Anguilla.
One day?
The whole week, actually.
The week of the 13th?
I leave Wednesday, the 15th, and I return Sunday, the 19th. So I could do Monday, Tuesday. Same thing on the next week because you've got Thanksgiving.
Yeah, the Thanksgiving week's not good. Everybody's out.
How does the?
The last week also, personally, I'm okay Monday, Tuesday, but not, no, I'm only okay Tuesday.
Okay.
But we don't have to plan everything around my schedule.
Sounds like we are anyway.
It looks like Tuesday, the 28th, or Monday or Tuesday, the 13th or 14th?
I'm going with Tuesday, the 14th.
Tuesday, the 14th?
I can make it work. What, yeah.
Or Tuesday, the 28th. Is that not good for you, Richard?
14th, fine. Oh, that works, yeah.
One of the Tuesdays, 14th or 28th?
14th or 28th? Okay. And so I'll, I'll go back and check availability with, you know, whatever room we decide to have this in and also actually, I'll reach out to Mr. Halliburton as well to check his availability. And so it sounds like we've got a pretty good consensus on either the 14th or the 28th.
First week in November, even though you want to do the latter half, but the first week's open.
Okay. I don't think that we will have it fully vetted internally by that, by that point, unfortunately.
And are you thinking, is this like a two-hour meeting or?
I'm thinking probably a two-hour meeting, probably daytime, morning or afternoon because it's not going to be a public hearing. We don't, we'll, we'll advertise it as a public meeting, but I think it's more or less to get feedback from the Planning Commission and kind of workshop our ideas with you before we bring it to you for official action, for an official action to do anything else with it.
Okay.
Okay. So, so anytime the morning of those two, of those two days works for, morning or afternoon works good for, for y'all. Okay, great. I'll be back in touch about that and we'll, we'll, we'll get something set up. Appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you. Any other business this afternoon? Okay? Okay. If not, we stand adjourned.